Yes.
They just got the police chief and they found that he used to be a police officer here. Oh, Derek. He's now a police chief. I know the whole... Dear old members of the state, what's the matter with the country on the other side of our families and laws members? Lords, your pride, your family, your family, your pride, your family. That wasn't like the best decisions would keep you in a hard term, I don't think it is. Alright, only thing we need to add to the agenda is we need to add farm, as far as make sure it's helpful, so we can add to the agenda. What can I say?
We second. I was chairman of that.
No, we're not. We're not. We're coming out of prison, this is the end. We're coming out of prison in the end before it's not.
Oh, okay. I second.
All in favor? I would like to hear. You have approved the minutes from the last meeting, it's handed from prison, they said session minutes from the last meeting, y'all, y'all straight aside.
My motion to approve this for instance from the regular session.
Yeah, and minutes from our regular, maybe that. I can have a second.
Have a second.
Alright, all in favor?
Okay.
I would just want to hear. Alright, old business, the focus library request for additional $6,000. I think y'all handled that at that last meeting. I should have already talked about it. Is there any question about it, if y'all want to approve it or want to do that?
But it's just something for the budget for the next year.
Yeah, that was just, I get, I'm beginning to start.
But we have, the budget is not been completed yet.
No, they were just, remember the lady hanging last night?
I remember, but I don't see asking a question.
No, the budgets might be completed, we're going to be finishing out it next week and for everybody to look at, but what y'all approved is, we'll have to prove that we're gonna have that to it, that way they know for their budget, so they can budget that $6,000 each upcoming months.
My question is, Mr. President.
What have we been saying, Daniel, do you know?
About 20, what is it, 21?
Yeah, roughly, it's going up to 23, 40 months, you say that a month, if you take that by before, or we're paying 17, 40 months.
A month? So it's, oh.
So that's 20, 29, so 20,900 right now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 20,900 right now, it's going up to 26,900 yearly.
Sure, you said, sure. We're paying 20,900 right now, and so it'll be going up to 26,000.
For the year.
For the year.
I understand you're talking about for 2026, right?
Yes, sir.
But what I'm asking is, we have not completed the budget, I understand she wants to add $6,000 to the budget for the next fiscal year, right, am I correct? Right, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we have not, the budget has not, you have not completed the budget, right? The minstrels have not completed the budget, so you're saying, I don't see when I add this to the budget for the coming year, right?
All my questions are good, but. Alright, got them, wait another second, all in favor? opposed? I want to hear. Alright, Jay, you want to talk about this, this will be a grand.
I just want to let you know that I did get approved for the fiscal year 2025, I mean, this year it's a 10, uh, a 10% match. Our amount was $42,963.21, and they said the $4,296.31 can be incorporated into the project cost, and then there was also some supplement LRA funds, which is the local road assistance funds, that was offered for a 0% match, and I applied for that, and we got it also, and it was $52,708.66. So both of them together is a combined total of $95,671.87 that we approved, got approved to fix the three roads that were on the sheet, and they were Harley Street, the Build Street, Washington Circle, the West Land, and many streets west, same avenue. So now all I have to do is get some contractor bids for that, and we can start kind of have those roads approved, and then work towards others.
That's correct, so now we can talk into further. Alright, Jay.
We assisted the intergovernmental reason between the city and the county, all got over the department regarding a SLOSS. If the intergovernmental agreement had agreed to, by all of the parties, the SLOSS would take effect January 1st, 2026, and approve by those in November, and it lasts until 2022. Of all, and the last big six-year SLOSS at that point in time, so that's a benefit of having agreement, it can be done without agreement, this and the other, but the current one does not have an agreement, but this still tracks, a lot of what's currently in place, I don't know the ins and outs of what's different, but one thing that is the same is 10% off the top goes to Recreation Department with the account being handled by the city here, that it being done now. The proceedings of what the county will receive after that, what the city will receive after that, are over the department, are only exhibit A, which is page, I think it's probably page 12. Page 11, City Day, and so it's got this, the joint project being, being the recreation, estimated at 480,000. If you were, if you were looking, like the next one is Queens County Projects, and it's 2.3 million, and it's got the cities there, the county still has to break down how much of that 2.3 million goes into each one of these categories. Same thing for the city, so Samantha has written that in, so the next one, the city would get 1.5, 336, and Samantha has divided that, I believe she divided that based on the procedures that were done in the last SLOSS. So what the council needs to do is know that it's agreeing to proceed 32.73% of the SLOSS proceeds for next day, the amount of one and a half million and change, and that these are the projects that the city council wants to do with that money, and the breakdown of the amount of that money y'all will spend on those projects. This language is copied from, I think, the, I think it's the current SLOSS in place, or either the one, either the one before that, or a combination of both. Their general road strength arrangements and bridge maintenance repairs improvements, that's very, very general, the next one is very general, but a little more specific, major capital equipment improvements for city hall. To me, that's the one y'all need to teach and look at and discuss, and make sure that that's, that is something that you want to, want to do, and this is the right amount, 120,000 on that. Construction of improvements to major capital equipment for public, meaning to be events, facilities, if that's been done in the forward, you think about taking that off and amending it, and I want to know, I know y'all done some improvements to the community, event facilities, like last year, I get that, and so I'm assuming that a lot. Public safety and emergency vehicles and equipment, again, very, 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 pretty general there, you know, and I think that's one more. Construction and improvements to water system facilities. We've, we've been talking with our engineers about the water project, and there's a lot of contingencies, and they're able to find it, all the way to some educations that the funding would be 100% grant money. So a fallback position is, a percentage of it may not be grant money, but be co- interest loans, that have the possibility of being forgiven, down to the third option, that the city's gonna have to put in money to make the project good, and right now, we don't know, Samantha has been saying it, our, we don't, our engineers don't know how that's gonna play out, so that, that is certain for consideration there, for how much y'all want to, you want to put in for the water. You could use a water system, water facilities, deposit that, so, I mean, it's a mess.
Alright, can we approve this once we, or does that have to be enough?
She said as long as it's 1926. She has to have it.
Let's, let's work on this this week, and we'll present it to the council members.
And move in something from the engineers.
Alright, we're, we're gonna do that, I'll make it next week, next week anyway, to do the budget, and we'll have this, these numbers ready, if y'all need it.
Hey, the whole, the whole basic paper there, it's all the lessons, then.
What, I don't know what proceedings we got last time.
I mean, there's about, yeah.
I think it's on, was that the first one?
Yeah, the front is the last year for the, that's the last SLOSS for it.
I think that front page is y'all's last, and then. So I think the city's proceedings have gone down, but I think the last. I don't know, I don't get it. That's, that was my answer. We've got two bids in front of us now, for more proposals to bid out downtown, Moline and Playa. We need to do two things before we can set one, we need to run into paper, because we got lots of, lots of long period differences between county, and we need to have the budget approved before we, before we agree on what we think, to make sure that it's involved in the budget, and so we, as our, y'all, we will try next week, start finding something in the paper, and we can have some proposals by the time, like the final approval on the agenda, we can have bids for the cemetery, and for all the streets down there.
What I believe is something about.
Wait, like, I, I, what I, I talked to Joe, and I was like, go to call some people, and let's try to get an idea of what it's gonna cost, so we're not going to start budgeting, and so people found out, just from Joe talking to people, I guess we talked to people, so people turned in some bids, we haven't asked for bids, but they just turned in bids, wanting to do the work.
That's what I was asking, the question, where we're at. I'm saying, that's why, that's why I asked the question, how do we get a bid before we ever advertise in the paper that we needed a bid, because I want to ask some questions.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Joe talked to people about trying to find out, like, give us rough estimate, what you think it's gonna cost to do, to do what we're wanting to do, just so we would know, have some numbers in our mind, before we ever even bid it out, and some of the people just only had to turn in a bid, but they haven't had the space of what we're wanting to do, and so their bid is on what we're actually gonna bid at. And so, that, that, it's hidden, they turned it in, so it's hidden here, but we're not setting bids right now, we're gonna, we're gonna bid it out, and have it passed it, and then we'll take other bids and look at which is better.
I understand, and I'm just asking a question about how we receive them to forgive.
Yes, that's, they understand.
The question of being proposed, or somebody there, to be at home without the information that we needed, of what we, of what we need for the cities, for what's gonna be done, for property, for them, for their loan contract, so that's the same, it's kind of like putting the horse before the horse, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, like, yeah, they just, and we can ask for, then just turn it in.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying, it's putting the horse before the horse.
Alright, and with the budget, that's what we're gonna do, we need to have a call meeting next minute, and, and we'll have a budget ready for the city council to look at, and start the process of approving or changing it, or whatever.
I got something I want to discuss and share, I mean, I just, I thought it was kind of on the way up here, and I was looking at how many days we have before the budget has to be approved, right, so July 1st.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a person.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm not able to afford the process of getting a budget approved by the council, is that a lot of times we don't have enough time before July 1, July 1, for the, you know, for the coming fiscal year, is that I think we always kind of like, at the last, like, you don't have like a few days to get it done, you know what I'm saying, I'm saying? Then we gotta have call meetings to try to, you know, get it approved, and then we end up after July 1, so I think the process has to begin a little bit earlier. I'm not making myself clear, I'm just saying I'm asking a question, because I may be incorrect.
You're exactly correct, I had plans to start working on this, let's say, um, a month and a half ago, and then I'd be going back and forth to Jacksonville with him, and I, I just had that time to start, and all of a sudden, it's gotten up here on me, and it's my fault that we don't have it done yet, because I had those things I need to be working on with it, and I hate that round with it, but now, you know, now, I mean, now, it's almost, what we'll do is, is next week, we'll meet, and not approve it, but change where y'all can change, look at it, make some decisions, get final numbers in there, and then start running in the paper, and then just have to be have another meeting, can't, and run in the paper, and then assume that it could be approved, and July will approve it. But the reason it's not ready to be approved July 1 is my fault, because I haven't, I haven't had it.
I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that, but I'm just saying, the process to put it this all together, to start the budget, I'm not saying, I'm just.
Yeah, we, we have planned.
Remember, like, February to March, you know, that's the process to get it put together.
Alright, the financial report, there's some y'all we need to, there's numbers of y'all in the best, so we need to approve the financial report. Alright, all in favor? You have a, on the here. Alright, you got it.
And I, I'm having a thing about, hello, hey, this is a thing I want to talk about, from a thing I want to talk about, it's brutal in this song. I don't want to work with you, but I would be embarrassed if people be coming in, and this young boy look like I don't know who, so y'all need to talk about some kind of way to get that grant money, or SLOSS money, or whatever, got money, and try to build a lower road in here. And the sidewalks on, on, particularly on Ridge Street, and those sidewalks, I'm trying, they have been done since they put them down, and that went back any day. Also, and I used to walk away and work under the dirt gang, and up time too, so I was trying to figure out if any kind of way we could kind of, I know we got a lot of roads in the name we got to pay, but some kind of way that we could put the sidewalks on Ridge Street out there, from all of them broken in, they got grass growing for them, and everything. and everything.
Sidewalk down Red Street, or sidewalk on both sides there?
The sidewalks on both sides, but if you're going this way, the one on the right side is the worst. Now, the one on the other side is still kind of alright, but the one on the right side is the worst.
Sidewalk on the right side, left side.
So you're going down off, um, the path.
Yeah, that's right, right side.
Yeah, the right side, and that's where we're at. It's about a great snatch that's out. Y'all never want to break your sight there, um. Both of them, they, they ain't never done it for us, they've been here. And I think that might have been about fifty or sixty years ago, I think, a long time.
Let us get, um, all we can do with that is let us get, put somebody here to look at it and give a surprise from what it would cost us, maybe even do it in sections instead of all at one time. And then we'll see what's going to cost and maybe that's something that can come out as well. And that, that's what we're thinking there.
And the other thing, um, we had set up a, a code pool that we was doing with, um, Wallace and, I think it was, Ed, Ed, yeah, Ed. And, um, we had, I think it's part of the right, and we didn't move another leg. But anyway, we had started on it and we were doing pretty good and we were finished off and then I learned the thing, what a storm coming. And that knocked us out. So I got a little good, I talked to Sam about it and then I talked to Ed. And I thought, we can get with Sam, you know, we can try to start it back. Because some of the stuff around here looking bad, both storms, not the storm coming, then you got more bad stuff. And some were big bad, so they couldn't have got that up on stone. So, because it's sometimes, you know, we can do to try and get, kind of straight up off. I'm talking, it's all over this town. Now, you think say one car, it's there, but over right in the house, you cause people around the house, all kind of junk. And if we can get something that junk straight out, you know, look a whole lot better.
Yes, we've already got a board in place, y'all, y'all still have to maintain and figure that. Because y'all, we already got a board in place, y'all.
Yeah, we already got a board.
Yeah, we got it together as far as, okay, you figure that? That's accurate.
Okay, all right. That's all I can be, I'll, thank y'all.
Ms. Moore?
So, see, do you want to go back to first? The DDA Main Street Board has had two vacancies, um, for about a year now and we've been looking for candidates to fill those spots. Um, the state has certain requirements that we have to meet to be able to have people on the board. And so, um, we put out, with, with those requirements in place, we put out an invitation for applications, uh, within those requirements. And we only received one back, and that was with, um, Arthur Perry, um, as a business owner, a property owner and a homeowner in the downtown area. He met the requirements, like, time story of what the state requires from us. So I have to pray for you all to approve in me adding on to my board. We still have a vacant seat and we're still actively seeking another person to fill that seat, but we would like to go ahead if possible and appoint him onto the board of the Main Street Board. Arthur Perry, sent it.
All right, can y'all find the, um, the next one, bring us an updated list of who on the board and their current time out?
Sure.
Because I don't think you have a, I don't think you have a current, current list. So the DDA is going to appoint Arthur Perry on their, on their board. And so all we have to do is just accept their reputation. And so, so we have a motion for that. Ms. Moore? Man, did you say? All in, all in favor of Arthur Perry's things? So, so motion here. And the difference, the difference in this board, usually a city council person, they, they can't serve like on the red bar board and the, um, I want to say, the, the zoning board and our boards, but the DDA is totally separate. They have their money, they have, it's their own, I, I guess their own entity, the DDA.
Right.
And, um, doesn't have anything to do with Main Street. You're just, you, you have the DDA direct.
So the, the Main Street Board and DDA's order made in the same way, or sort of like to go through the same training?
Yeah.
But the voting capacity is different. So they'd vote with the DDA where he could be like an ex-OBSC member for the Main Street. They can report, like in my absence, he can report on anything that we have going on. But he wouldn't be a voter on the Main Street Board.
Or the City Board, like the red bar board and the other.
Right. The DDA is a separate legal body.
Yeah.
And so while we operate underneath city's tax ID number, we still are a separate, like a separate government body, so we can take home like litigation, but it never involved the city that does it. The second thing I had was that, um, we were gifted, um, a photo booth when we went to the Georgia Downtown Association Conference. We bid and won the bid on a photo booth and that is supposed to be delivered tomorrow, weather pending. And we're really excited. That would have been then over by the fountain. And, um, the, the generator from that, we're going to resupply the photo booth, but also we'll be able to use those for other projects downtown and we'll back to the, the decision about how we would like to reuse those. Um, this whole applied for the ClearTouch African Board a couple of years ago and asked if the depot would be willing to accept one because we are some, what we are a meeting place for conferences and other things. We were able to help them during the pandemic and so they wanted to gift us with, with the ClearTouch African Board, but then also if they had to use our facility, we would have something on site that they were already used to using. So that came in this week and I'll be doing training on it for us to be able to use. So I'm very excited about that. Um, we have, um, the DDA has merch, but they're about to start selling in one of our storefronts. And I just brought one example, but this is one of the shirts that we have done on. There'll be more stuff that we'll have doing. Um, but we're very excited about that. That would be another way for us to generate funds to put back into the city to be able to do, uh, some great projects, beside grants and those types of things. And that's everything, y'all. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, I got a few things that, and just picking back off what this, um, this cat had said about the building. As we say, the last time during the, uh, the last meeting, we were looking at, and I think I gave you a copy of it, but we were looking at the food development, community facility grant program, which, uh, I feel that the property that is, if you're coming into town, will be suitable for a building, a two-story building, a new municipal complex. And I just wanted to share that because that, you know, if we can get approved of that, this cat, we'll have a word up in the cockpit at the moment. But, uh, and also I wanted to bring your attention in reference to radios. I passed around, uh, which I didn't mention, uh, another topic that I apologize for that, but passed around a quote for our own radio system, which we would have our own entity, we would have to share with, share something because like I said beforehand, there's a tower that's down and it makes it kind of, uh, kind of bad for trying to listen to or communicate over a radio system when it is constantly going out. And this, uh, for, for that estimate would be twelve thousand six hundred and one dollars thirteen cents. I also attached the, the other radios that will work with this tower because these radios also could be encrypted. It's a, it's a chill, chill type of feeling when you're in a house on call and they can hear everything that you say. And we had different incidents where we go on calls, burglaries and things like that. Go back and look at footage, they find out that we're coming and they, you know, flee. But that's one of the things that concerns me is everybody to get a radio. We love everybody to interact, but there's times whenever there's things that we're going to that everybody doesn't think you hear, stuff like that. Uh, these radios can be encrypted as well. The, the next will be, I know we were talking about infrared cameras. And this is, this is part of the act, so I haven't submitted that to you on, I think it's the last one, but this is just a brief of it. This camera system, which will fit in all the cars and what that does is it also has the LVR system. The LVR system is whenever it's tagged and stuff that, and you bring it through the computers and that will also alert some stolen video persons, persons, things like that, as another piece of equipment that we put in our tool box for safety issues as well. And I can tell that forward is broken by seventy, sixty-nine, three hundred and seventy of, uh, the camera system, that'd be one of the needs to be here. The next, uh, as what I was speaking with, and I'm sorry about going through this kind of fast, but speaking with you, the city may have reference to this about the retirement. In order to do a case study, the, the case study fee will be twenty-five hundred dollars, but they will assess everything and, and put plans together. And if there's any additional, uh, plans or features, that'll be extra thousand dollars, but it costs twenty-five hundred dollars to start the case study in reference to the , the retirement. And the retirement, I think I sent you on packing on that, but I can also make another in G O D. But it's the, the one through G M A. And it adds some of your benefits. I think I gave that to you on the last, last, something maybe. The, also, I wanted to also touch on, uh, what this cat was also talking about in reference to the code enforcement. The, of course, we had a lot of things that he was doing with, going around talking to people about the, the, um, I guess you can say the development of the residence. And he's speaking with them and then also he has wrote several different citations for that. So it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a long-term process and hopefully he can extract some of it, but we have to keep in mind that, um, this stuff is here for a while and it's gonna take a little bit to get everything situated. It's not gonna happen overnight, but he's going to get the villagers to make sure that everything is done, even when you're talking about, um, buildings and things like that. And we, there's a certain process that we have to deem them abandoned and unliving. So there's a process to that. And lastly, the update on the, we have vehicles just waiting on the equipment to come in so that they can be marketed so we can put them on the streets. However, I'm not pleased with the current venue. And I'm working on a different one to get this, this stuff situated because business is business at the end of the day, if they're not moving accordingly, then, uh, have to try to get this stuff situated. So that's, uh, that's my update on everything, pretty much. You guys have any questions?
Yeah, um, the last one, Senator, correct, you called me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If it's not going to cost them equal money and every, I told her to make sure that what you're talking about, I don't want to have a station for it, but there's nothing they have to do that's gonna cost them more money or hire more people or anything. And she said she didn't think it would, but I told her to give them due on the type of radio that's going to be and make sure it works.
Right. When, uh, that, they have a cost already set aside for, uh, a big one that we can utilize. Then as far as the, uh, I guess the employee or the manpower, it'll be the same person that's doing this now.
That's right.
So, and then even with that, it won't cost anything to put all of that together and be real efficient.
Correct. All right, will y'all still be able to communicate, I'll just sit with the county, as well?
We, we can switch up the channels and talk with them, but it will not be this, uh, I would say plus a little bit, because a lot of times when you have different agencies on the radio and it's flashing and this is where a lot of that problem is whenever, you know, you call and dial stuff like, hey, uh, I'm at this hall and then it's bleeding over from the other agency, so a lot of people talking to each other. And that is, that, that can cost as well with everything else, like I was saying before, there was times whenever they had, uh, one of the dogs that got, got ran from them, they had chase and all this other stuff, but this actually didn't happen. Because the radio system, with the radio system being down like a deer, it has to go seven miles out of town and then come back. So by the time all of that works up and comes, it's weightless. By the time it comes back, it's kind of distorted. It's just a hit and miss sometimes, like if you're on a, uh, let's say a, a power pole or something like that, sometimes that mess is looking single as well. So there's different variables to having it, but having a, uh, a repeater and stuff within the city limits, that means that we can, we can go on stories, they can hear us and things like that. This is why everybody has to set one, just to make something happens and especially you can get a hold of them. And, uh, so that, that's, that'd be one of the plus.
Yeah, and y'all, like, if something's going on and y'all are having to go to the county or they're having to go to the city, y'all can communicate with them, but I, I
Yeah, that, that's, I mean, it's, it's interchangeable, so that's, that's not an issue.
All right, I, I, I don't know, I'm, in your, um, in the meeting budget, I've, I've got this budget that's under the council board, uh, we'll get it next week. I've got a budget in the budget, I'm going to create it there.
Uh, that's it.
We thank you for talking about, uh, very glad to listen and know what's going on with the, that's a good job, we, we got a lot of, we're sending them to the, um, the list, we have to scan that if they, so they, so they, that, I think, that's great.
Yes, sir, um, with, with that, it can be encrypted. Now, they, they probably have to pay some money to go in there and, you know, try to listen and stuff like that, but my main concern is we have, uh, you know, we have a lot of people that listen to radio, uh, that doesn't mean that everybody's good. So, you know, and, and like I said, they exist and there's been times whenever there was people doing things and it was listening to us and it's in area, stuff like that. So that is a concern because an ambush can only take five seconds. And if a person is listening to us and we pulling up or whatever, they already know we're, we're there. They already know that, hey, they finna pull up so one of us get shot off of me, because that has happened. So, you know, a little countless, countless few of ambushes and things like that occurred because people have access and listen to the radio, library, even though it may be a five, three to five second delay, that delay still counts towards the ban, so.
Good to have that service. We used to get a call, which is, you know, people, scan that B S, because we're, we should probably pick up there.
And then that, that, I'm glad you said it, because also that can start a, a conflict whenever something happens and people want to show up before we get there. And just like the other day when they had a medical call and stuff like that, people want to, you know, show up and all that, and we tend to do stuff a little differently because if we're trying to render aid to somebody or help someone or whatever, please do not come to the city. The best way to do that is because sometimes people get upset and want to show out and we understand, but if it's a point in time whenever people show out and you can't talk to them and then other reports is we got to put you in the bar and take you off because you entered the process, we don't want to do that because it's tragic if we, if somebody that remember passes. We don't want to get to that state. So this is why a lot of times we're like, and it's led us through our job and then you go later, but when people listen to the radio and they, they going faster than we are trying to get there and, you know, they're trying to do first aid and all this other stuff, contamination scenes and stuff, so we can't do that a little bit different.
All right, um, if you will, you got anything?
I was talking about grass, grass. I've read a real big, I'm repeating this, but I go into a swamp, I can cross the river. They say, they say, um, the mowers can work. I think, if that's more, I think.
Did it work?
No, it worked? Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think so, but I think they have that, um, the thing to clean the ditches out.
James used to mow the railroad ditches, the old, so, but, but he can get out that high and mow that ditch and get that grass down.
Yes, I, I had that in the back, have it tore up outside of that, but there, there were, you know, to get out that thing.
Yeah, riding the streets, yeah, all around the streets, the grass is going up there. I'm glad people that people who live in, by the street there.
Yes.
People that live by the street, they got to mow out there, but, but, yeah. If you can see about that, that railroad mowing, mowing, we get it.
I would love to see that, I would love to see.
So, man, we'll do that, that's a good one.
Uh, it's the railroad. I want to, I want to see that, that, please.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, right, and, uh, the, the grass, it's got, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, I had to remind this thing, but I don't have this thing right now.
All right, um, I'll, you. And I think we need to go into the session for a minute. We don't. And so as we get, we just, uh, we'll have a meeting that means it's, uh, probably. So we need to move to the turn, so I need to get. Have a second?
Sure.
Do you need to move?